Order the Bryan City Council meeting for Monday of February 20th, 2023. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this beautiful President's Day in Bryan, Ohio. And we're going to kind of switch things around a little bit. As you can see, we're a little short on council members right now, and we hope to be able to rectify that. So we're going to start with the approval of the minutes from February 6th, 2023 meeting.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Second item, hearing of public concerns. Mr. Wieland.
We have on the agenda, on the hearing of public concerns, a public hearing for agricultural parcels. You're going to have an item, be item seven down below, resolution approving request to continue parcels and. Per Ohio revised code, we have to have a public hearing on this. It's something new that started. I own farm ground. My farm ground is in an ag district, and it just so happens there's a couple parcels in Bryan. Two of them, the city owns, which is our north industrial park, and then there's two adjacent to it, which are Eschovens properties. They're within the city limits. They were previously an agricultural district, and they want to continue to be an agricultural district. Every five years, you have to do a renewal. Like I said, out in the county, I just sign the paper and send it in. But in a municipality, you actually have to go to the city or village council and have a resolution or some type of legislation passed approving it. So we're going to ask for that approval later, but this is more or less just the public hearing on this. If anybody had any questions on what an ag district is, it basically just helps protect the landowner against some nuisance lawsuits and might save them a little money on assessments for water and sewer if we ever go by. They can only be charged one assessment versus per foot. But obviously, if they do develop it, then they could be assessed again at a later date. So brief public hearing. It didn't need to take that long, but we just had to have this as a formality. So if you have any questions on an ag district, I can answer that. Otherwise, we'll address the resolution later.
Nope.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Wieland. Okay. Yes, at this point, we're going to take things out of order. We're going to go to the annual reports. Engineering, please.
Okay, short and sweet. I promised everybody I would talk 20 minutes, but I'll narrow it down to about five. You all had copies of my annual report. This does not follow the annual report in the book. I never do because I dislike people watching as I'm going. So basically, we're just highlighting the city that this was one of our projects we did last year, the paving program on South Walnut Street. You go ahead, Mayor, and hit the next slide. I've always got pictures of my team up there. Of course, Melanie Kaiser, she retired in May of last year. Cliff, Andy, Dawn, Scott, Patrick, and Tiana, and it takes everybody to get everything done. So we appreciate every single one of them.
I would like some updated pictures from the field view next year.
I was 20 pounds lighter in that picture. Projects last year. I got five slides on what we had done last year. Most of them are still carrying over into this year. Western Bryan sanitary sewer improvements, which was Horton Heights, was bid in April. SNS Directional Boring was the contractor, cost almost 2.2 million. We did receive $2.1 million in grant funds for that. That was just a special water and sewer infrastructure grant. Very fortunate to get it. The balance will come from the half percent income tax, which again was approved last fall in the last another nine and a half years, and we thank the voters for that. This project should be completed in April of this year. I know they're starting, they took a couple weeks off in the project because it was so muddy, but they had one more run to do. I think they're going to try and get that done this week before the rain hits, and then they'll do the seeding in early April, and we should be done. Another job similar to this is just the Western Bryan sanitary sewer replacement. Now, this is right adjacent to Horton Heights. Both projects are named the same because I had applied for grant funds, but just differentiated them in areas. This also, SNS Directional received the job. It was bid in October, $465,000. Up to 50% will be covered through Ohio Public Works. We'll get up to $275,000 back. We should begin in the next few weeks and should be done in May. Noble and Pleasantwood last year was bid in April of '22. Bryan Excavating LLC, $265,000, was completed in November. One was just a repave, and the other was a full depth removal on one block of Pleasantwood. The asphalt program last year, we do it every year. That's a picture of the parking lot behind the buildings on the east side square. Kirk and paving, $583,000, again out of the half percent income tax. We were pretty much in the east part of town, East Butler Garden, Emmett, Cherry Walnut, Wesley, as well as this parking lot. Payment marking program, it's a staple we do every year, bid in February, about $105,000 out of the half percent income tax. Griffin Pavement Striping received a bid. Their company has done it. It used to be Zimmerman Paints, but they changed names, same company year after year. So we appreciate it. Our code enforcement officer, Cliff, there's two pictures that we had from last year. Key thing, he had 254 cases he investigated, 234 were resolved. There's 20 still pending, which may be court action pending, or they're a work in progress. Maybe they didn't quite have time to clean everything up. And summaries up above there, you know, he gave a few verbal warnings, some written warnings, actually 45 citations that actually went to court. So whether they paid the ticket and pled out of court or actually went to court, but actually 45 citations we issued. And as you can see, some of the pictures down below, some of the things he's dealing with, and he's definitely been an asset to have. We really, he's really made a difference in town, I believe. Zoning Division, which is Andrew, picked up a little bit from last year. We had 11 commercial projects, four residential projects, 12 zoning certificates were issued, and 274 violations. So this is actually on top of Cliff's violations that he did. This is structure violations, pool violations, and things like that. 115 were corrected, 25 are still pending, and two of them went to court.
Did I go too early?
You're fine. Go. Next.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Other tasks, we take care of the traffic signals. We help Bryan Municipal Utilities with bidding on projects. We bid wastewater and parks capital projects. We help the street department out as needed, and obviously, as you saw, we have a zoning and building department in-house. One thing I want to just point out here, we received $3.3 million in grant funds for 2022 and 2023. And you'll probably see a similar slide to this next year as well. This doesn't happen very often here. I mean, I know we're pretty good at getting grants, but to get $3.3 million in grants, that's amazing. I mean, 2.1 million from water and sewer infrastructure, and we still have a project in the running for a second round of that money, which might be $850,000. We'll see what happens. $275,000 in CDBG funds. We got $400,000 for safe routes to school to cover sidewalks. $275,000 for a water joint project on South Lynn Street through Ohio Public Works, and also another 265 of block grant money. So happy between the two years worth of construction, 3.3 million. So we'll take that any day. Goals, just do what I can to stretch my half percent income tax funds as far as I can. Obviously, apply for more water and sewer projects through Ohio Public Works, and we got East Village roadway repairs and rehabilitation. We've talked a little bit about the East Village, which is out in the east part of town here, obviously. When those streets were constructed back in the 70s, some of the stone they used was kind of clay and it's a sponge, and we pave it, and three years later, the road breaks up. So we had two spots about 300 feet long that I think Mrs. Leatherman's pretty aware of where they're at. We did an experiment there, and it seemed to work. So we need to see if I can find some grant funds to redo that entire neighborhood. We may try and bid maybe a $300,000 or $400,000 chunk of that yet this year, depending on how a few other projects come in. But that's one of my goals here, is to get more of East Village taken care of, because it's, it's just a Band-Aid. We pave it, and it's junk in three years, and it should last 16, so. And obviously, continue on commercial, industrial, clean water investigations, and the street department's been a big help on that with the camera and whatnot, trying to find leaks and whatnot in there. So with that, I think that should be my last slide. I don't know if you had any questions.
Great presentation, I'm glad I got to see it.
If you need to see it again, I'll be glad to go over with you.
Yeah, everybody wants curbs and gutters and all the.
Absolutely.
Part of it. And if I remember right, you mentioned along the way that the cost of doing that has increased substantially, say, over the last five or 10 years?
So I haven't talked to Derek from BMU lately on the cost of his Lynn Street waterline project, but I guess I'll let the cat out of the bag now. What we thought was $600,000 is now going to be close to $1 million to do, just in three years, and that's just waterline and asphalt. So we need to regroup and try and figure out how we're going to handle some of these projects. I used to say it was $600 a foot to build a new road with water, sewer, sanitary, and so forth. I'll bet we're up to 9, 950, maybe almost $1,000 a foot. So it's, it's out of control with the cost of everything, and we see that nationwide. So that's why, to me, grant funds are so critical, and unfortunately, grant funds aren't necessarily available for expansion. It's typically for replacement, something that's critical. You have a water line like this Lynn Street joint project, we were able to secure $500 and some thousand dollars of the then $600,000 cost, you know, to try and cover a lot of that, so because it was replacement of critical infrastructure. But to just put a new street in, we have to eat that ourselves.
Now, have you seen the grant funds that are available increase at the same rate that the cost of putting these in?
Not really. The water and sewer infrastructure program that we had last year, that was a special bill passed that generated billions of dollars out there, and it's great. I mean, money's still available in there for that. So, I mean, we'll have that, but the tax dollar still has to come from somewhere. You know, you look at our half percent income tax, the revenues, I'll say are generally flat. We're still getting about the same thing that we got 15 years ago. I mean, it's a little higher, but it's not twice as high as what it was. It's maybe 10, 15% more. So, you know, I don't see the income coming up, but the expenses are going up higher. So someday, we're going to have to have an uncomfortable conversation on how we're going to fund some of these sewer and storm sewer and roadway projects, whether we look back at assessments or whatnot. So it's coming someday, but we're not there yet. But no, the grant funds are not increasing incrementally with the cost of everything, while we're having to scale our projects down to be able.
The Lynn Street one starts when?
Not sure yet. We're waiting on, we're waiting on an environmental clearance on one section, and then Derek and I need to talk on how we're going to handle the extra costs on the project.
And that's just repaving?
No, yeah, that's just repaving, yeah. Well, it may just be patching. It's probably just going to be patching the road rather than a repaving issue. We're going to have to maybe look at something different there, because I don't know where him and I are going to come up with the extra $400,000 or $500,000 to cover it. So we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but sorry, Derek, we're going to talk about that tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Would you like to do streets now?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do streets, and then we'll move on with.
Evening.
Good evening.
So last winter, we purchased, we not necessarily hauled spread 610 tons, but we purchased from Morton Salt, 610 tons of salt, and it cost $35,957. And no brine was used due to the rain, which, if you remember last winter, before every snowstorm, it rained either the day before or the day of, and then switched to snow. So there was no point in spraying brine because it would just get washed off. And this winter, we haven't sprayed any brine yet either. And we only, you know, we only used 600 tons of salt last year. In the normal winter, we use 1,000 to 1,200 tons, and this year, we're only up to 400 tons so far. So we're not using a lot of salt and spending money on salt. And this is our employees, which is down to a total of 12 now, which used to be 16, but with doing away with trash and retirements and closing of the recycling center, we're down to 12. Tom White, you see, he has 30 years. He has turned in his letter that he is retiring at the end of May this year, so in a couple months, Tom White will be leaving us, and we'll have to find a replacement for him.
Sorry.
List of routine duties, jobs that we do. The main highlight out of this was last year, we cut down 46 hazardous terracuries that were determined to be hazardous by the city arborists. And if you, I don't know if you remember, the year before, we didn't use the dirt patcher at all. This, last year, we did, and we used 7,250 gallons of emulsion, $14,391, which we all remember. Not everybody likes the dirt patcher, but it's a good tool to use, and it makes, it helps us keep the road from completely falling apart. I mean, we have to use it, and we used it a lot last summer. And the sewer crew cleaned and televised 23,550 feet of sanitary sewer, or 4.5 miles last summer, and we were able to do that because they weren't picking up trash three days a week. So hopefully, and we didn't start that until July, so hopefully, this year, that number will be quite a bit higher than what it was last year. But that's still a lot more than we've done years previous. So that worked out in our favor doing that.
What's the advantage of that? In other words, before, was it just like, not a lot of officers to back up or something, or create more, does it create more problems, more wear and tear on the pipe?
No, this, the purpose of doing it is to find bad spots that it can be fixed before they cause.
Before it comes, okay.
And the more you clean the sewer, the better it operates.
Sure.
So keeping the debris out of the sewer, they run, run better. So when it rains and they back up, I mean, the sewer is clean then, and the water can get away faster. The rainwater that's not supposed to be in there, but still does. And that helps us find where those spots are, like Brian mentioned, the cross connections that aren't supposed to be in there. And then still, we are still collecting the compost from inside the city, and we took in 226 tons and gave away 600 tons of compost and material, and that, obviously, those numbers don't match, because years previous, we had trouble getting rid of it. So we had a huge pile out there that was there year after year. But last year, one farmer up in Montpelier, up by Montpelier, wanted everything that we had at the end of the year, and he took it. So by the end of last fall, we didn't have anything that was composted. I mean, we had the leaves and grass that we picked up last summer and last fall, but it wasn't ready to go yet. So we got rid of everything that was ready to go, which is a good thing, because we were running out of. And out at the cemetery, we had 39 burials, and we poured 22 bases in 2022. And that's it. Questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to our agenda and move on to item number three, which is a clerk treasurer's report.
Counsel has been provided with a clerk treasurer's report for the month ending January 31st, 2023.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance. Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number seven, 2023, an ordinance authorizing expenditures of $1,492,241 for the de-watering project for the city of Bryan wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
This is the ordinance allowing us to get started on the construction phase of the de-watering project out at the wastewater treatment plant. As Lori said, it's just shy of $1.5 million to do the construction. That's equipment and labor involved, construction management. The, actually came in about $100,000 under what the contractor thought it was going to be when we first started out down this path, so we were glad to hear that. We certainly weren't expecting it with the way things have been going. If everything goes well, by this time next year, that'll be a completed project. There's long lead times on the equipment that we have to get. The actual construction portion of it, we're thinking maybe 30 days to 45 days. The rest of the time between now and then is just waiting to get the equipment, like everybody is right now. So if you approve, we'll get that under contract and get things heading in the right direction with it.
And counsel, I do want to note, in this, you're also authorizing the 865,000 of ARPA funds to be used towards this project that we had previously been sent from the state. I know we had talked about it in meetings, but this was your formal action, if you choose so, to use that ARPA funds for this infrastructure project.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Item number five is an emergency ordinance. Lori, please number and read.
Ordinance number eight, 2023, an emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the participation agreement for the One Ohio subdivision settlement with TIVA, Algarve, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart pursuant to the One Ohio memorandum of understanding regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds. Inconsistent with the material terms of the agreement dated November 22nd, 2022, propose national opioid distributor settlement agreement available at https://nationalopioidsettlement.com.
Counsel, if you recall, in August of 2021, you passed for an emergency measure for the city to enter into the One Ohio contract against three pharmaceutical companies. We have now been contacted by the state to join in a second one that will also be under the One Ohio umbrella for the five pharmaceutical companies all involved in the opioid settlements. If you would approve, I would be able to sign the agreement and get that sent back to the state within the deadline.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution. Lori, please number and read.
Resolution number 15, 2023, a resolution authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Bryan to apply for grants for the city of Bryan through the Montpelier Area Foundation, West Juneteenth Area Foundation, T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program, and Walmart Community Grant Program.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Again, in front of you, you have four more grants that we would like to apply for to help defray the cost of our inclusive playground that we're planning to start in the fall of 2023.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you put this up, it's at the Lincoln, the Old Lincoln School area, right?
Yeah.
Is the playground equipment that is there now still going to stay?
No, it'll be gone.
That will be gone?
Yep.
Okay, so it will be just this?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben. Item number seven is a resolution. Lori, please number and read.
Resolution number 16, 2023, a resolution approving request to continue the inclusion of certain property and an agricultural district in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 929.02.
We had a public hearing on this earlier this evening. We have four tax parcels, two of them are owned by the city of Bryan, and two of them are owned by Mr. Eschoven. As we discussed earlier, we need to approve this and allow him to approve this so we can sign his application, so we can submit it to the county auditor's office for approval. So I would recommend that you suspend the rules and pass this, please.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution. Lori, please number and read.
Resolution number 17, 2023, a resolution authorizing the city engineer at the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, to apply for the following grants, Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, community development block grant, CDBG, and small cities through the Ohio Department of Transportation, and others for the city of Bryan, Williams County, Ohio, as necessary.
I don't think I can get 3.3 million, but I'll try. So just asking permission to continue to apply for more.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number nine is another resolution. Lori, please number and read.
Resolution number 18, 2023, a resolution to accept a $4,600 donation from Project 2020, an initiative of Bryan Area Foundation, through the Parks and Recreation Department for the Fountain City Amphitheater.
First of all, I apologize for the first one not having the dollar amount on it. It somehow slipped through my fingers before I caught that, so I do apologize for that. So the one you have this evening should have the dollar amount on it, so you're aware of what that is. It is a donation from Project 2020 to help defray the cost at the Fountain City Amphitheater for the summer projects and programs that we plan to bring in for the 2023 summer season.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I'll go through.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 10 is another resolution. Lori, please number and read.
Resolution number 19, 2023, a resolution to accept $33,375 from Ohio BWC Safety Intervention Grant for the purchase of extrication equipment.
Hi, good evening. Earlier this year, you allowed me to apply for this grant. We were successful. We've been awarded this amount to replace some of our hydraulic tools, which is fortunate because we knew some were broke. We actually budgeted to replace them. This is going to move that money around a little bit for us. This is a matching grant, so we have the funds already to put our one-third in, and this will move us a little farther ahead than I originally planned. I asked you, you accept the money, and we can get on with our business then.
That's always a fun surprise.
Yes.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. And with that, since we've already had the annual reports, I would, I'll go around the room, see if anyone has anything additional, anything from our department heads, BMU. We'll start down here with Mary.
I am so sorry. I had it wrote on my calendar for tonight, looked at it this morning, and moved it to Tuesday, thinking, we don't have counsel tonight. It's Washington, or it's President's Day, so I do apologize for that.
We really thought if we sent the Parks Director with the police chief, it would be less intimidating.
Well, I was at my mom's house doing a mile check. I called his check, and then he followed me from there.
You're nice.
I just need to disclose that Judy wanted to impeach you.
John.
That was not.
Oh, maybe it was, maybe it was me. Maybe that was me.
Yeah, maybe it was.
I get confused.
Some reason I had a Tuesday, I had, left the phone in the car.
Come pick him up for the hall.
It was so unlike you, though, that we were actually quite worried.
Yeah, we were worried.
Because you're always here 15 minutes before and ready to go.
You always beat John.
Oh, yeah. Everybody.
But back to seriousness, I would like to thank the 2020 Project for their donation for the amphitheater entertainment. And with that, it's John next, or Rick, how do you want to do it?
John, if you'd go next.
Sure. Yeah, I'd also like to thank the Brian Area Foundation. Again, it seems like we do that on an ongoing basis, which is a very good thing, very appreciated, hopefully appreciated by all the people in Brian. Also, I want to thank Brian and Ben and Doug for their grant efforts, because they kind of go somewhat, somewhat unheard, and I think we need to give a shout out to them, because they not only apply, but in like Doug's case here, actually receive, and those funds improve the City of Brian at a substantial, sometimes no, but at a substantial decrease in cost. So thank you to all of them, and that's it.
Thank you, John. Judy?
I want to say thank you to the department heads for applying for these grants, because that really does help the city. Thanks to Brian and Tyson for their reports. Thank you to the Brian Area Foundation, and also the Ohio BWC for their safety grant.
Thank you, Judy. Mayor?
Just a couple of things. One, thank you, Brian and Tyson, for your annual reports. Both departments went through some transition last year, one with Brian losing his right-hand